I hate to, I hate to like turn down any chance of getting federal funding, but my goodness. It takes us a long time to get fifty thousand dollars. You know, it's a lot of work. We spent. I, I know we can probably get recoup for that cost, but I don't know if it's worth our time in the office to go through all of the. The documentation, a large flood is great, but it's just kinda. Kinda crazy, so um I think depending on how a flood event works and how we get. How we get put into the, to the declaration, it might not always be worth our effort to go and try to get. Recoup for some of the rock that goes down with our washouts, but we'll evaluate it each time, of course. We spent, we're still working on it and the flood was in the summer.
Yeah.
The documentation process is getting worse.
We found out with drainage.
Um, it's one of those yet you can do piece by, or uh, event by event because it's true, it's, it's a lot. Of hoops to jump through.
Well, it's not even anymore, here's the rock we put down there, they wanna have. We get a washout by a culvert, they wanna know how long the washout was, how wide it was, and how thick the rock was. Like, we put down. Two loads of rock, what was the dimensions? I, we don't care what the, we put the rock down to get the road back open, we're gonna. Measure everything, I, I mean, that's what they want.
Right.
It takes more time and money.
I, it does, and, and it's getting to the point, you know what, give that money to the people that really have a severe disaster that really can't. Cope.
Give it to Western Illinois?
But like I said, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give up on getting funding either, but I think sometimes with these small events like we get. It causes more expense nationwide when you've got every little flood event getting funding and. When it comes to, when it gets to a big event, oh, we don't have any funding. Well, you're, so anyway, I, that's my soapbox, but. Anyway, when we get that percremic policy. Um, and lastly. Uh, the National Association of County Engineers Conference is in Schaumburg, Illinois. The delegates are, I think the incoming president is from Iowa this year, and they wanna show a good supporting from Iowa, so. Plan on if it's okay to go to that, it's just a, you know, a long day drive over there. It's about four or five days, I can't remember how long it is, but registration's open and I only go to them when they're usually close by. So I think, and the budget can, can take that, so if it's okay, I'll plan on getting registered to go, it's a good networking thing and. Iowa always has a good turnout. Ninety, all ninety-nine counties through our County Engineers Association. Dues, we all, every county is associated with NACE, so I think Iowa's one of the, one of the states in the country that has the highest. Delegation. People that show up for the conference and so.
It's kind of good, it's dilapidated as our roads and bridges across the entire state.
If you can keep an association like that going.
Keep the, keep somebody at the national level trying to get funding.
There, I, I think it, it almost seems like every year since I've been here, there's always been an Iowa county engineer on. That board, whether they're president, vice president, treasurer, whatever, it, it cycles through and we're always, it always seems like we always have somebody. On that board, so that's good for Iowa, so. Anyway.
Yeah.
It's kinda like, you know what's going on there. That's all I've got for you.
Thank you for each. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, drainage.
Um, one, two.
Is there one? Um. Uh, drainage. That Elgason?
Yep.
So.
So.
DNR doesn't wanna pay.
Well, the DNR, of course, they told the landlord that, you know, cause he was questioning that and saying, hey, you know, I pay taxes or. And the DNR says, well, generally, or it was actually a fishing game, it says, we don't pay taxes. And uh, I kinda understood that, but. So we went down and looked at the project, of course, and I've been back there now a couple times and looked at it and been talking with Brian, who's been working on it. Um, and then Rob, Rob, I think it is, Rod or Rob Patterson. Called me Friday, wanted to know if we'd discussed it at all or whatever, I said, just a little bit, I said, we need to discuss it more today. I said, but I'm gonna tell you what. My drainage guy's been working on it, said he's looking anywhere from another, possibly, I think he was lower today, he said twenty-two, but that day was. Probably between thirty and fifty, just to get it back to what the DNR wanted. And I said, I'm gonna really have a hard time going, my landowners. Cause there's only just a handful of people in that district. They've got an outlet that they haven't had for twenty years, I said. Or thirty, thirty, forty years probably, actually, and um. You want us to fill that back in and you're not gonna participate, I said, I think if you want us to fill that back in. And I think the board will agree with me, you're gonna have to cough up the money. At least a good portion of it. Now, whether that'll happen or not, he said he'd probably be back in touch with me this week, so listen. Uh, I told Brian we'd stay in touch with him, but yeah, he was coming in. He suggested instead of trying to put it into the ditch that he dug, which has got some sand in the bottom, it's just gonna be a slushy mess. Go off to the side a little bit, you know, rewrite the title a little bit, and then you eliminate quite a bit of the bedding of the rock and stuff. Get the channel flow back in. Also did talk to Rod about, we talked about trees and weeds and grass. Um, I said, you guys are gonna have to start mowing that, and he said, you can probably do that, he said, you know, try to mow those, at least once a year. Every other year, mow those two areas where those two tiles go, and uh, cause otherwise, those trees there, we're gonna continue to have problems. But right now, for me personally, leaning on site as a farmer and realizing that I didn't know that was not outletting properly. It's funny it took that long to show up, but uh, you know, it was, they had, they had zero drainage off of this line, at least for the last year. So, you know, I mean, actually, I think the landowners. But, you know, I don't know how a landowner actually goes onto public ground like that unless you're a hunter, and if you do that outlet was there. You know, to me, there's even possibility they could probably go for crop damage and stuff if they wanted to, I didn't bring that up to Rod, but. You know, they, they all, a bunch of them lost a bunch of crops longer last year because of the six, seven inch rain we had, of course, but. But anyway, that's where I'm at right now, I'm just gonna let it ride, get more verification from them.
DNR doesn't pay for any drainage stuff like that, do they?
No.
So, my thought is, I guess, if they don't wanna. If they're, if they're not, they don't pay it, state says they don't have to pay it whenever, and go, but to me, if they don't wanna pay it, that's fine, or. But why can't they allow us to drain, to allow the flow to continue like it's supposed to? And, and if it's the cost of the district, it's the cost of the district, but there's no way.
Yep.
Right, so.
That's kinda what I look at.
My, that's my thought is, you know, if they don't wanna pay for nothing, that's fine, let the drainage flow work, cause we've had other instances where we're. Kinda butting heads or goes into DNR property, we still gotta, that water's gotta continue. It, it's no different than if you or I slow the water down or back it up on our private properties, people above us are gonna be upset.
Yep.
It's the same, they're, they need to allow that to happen too, so. I guess if they're willing to pay. Fine, if not, then I, I think it, it should be left alone.
Yeah, I think, as long as we got an outlet, and I think that outlet will function for quite a long time, I mean, I think. Doug Kingland's one of the landowners, um, he's probably gonna be one of the most active ones, Emes Crowe's another renter in there. They're probably gonna be a little more diligent going forward, hopefully. Some checking on that outlet a little bit, making sure it works, I mean, Doug just spent a bunch of money on tile, and I know Emes had wanted to do something on the farm he was renting. And uh, you know, well, the way it was, that tile was pumped full of water. Um, it was, I'm sure it was still draining, but at a pretty slow rate, so. The DNR did say, well, they would, you know, once we got to the outlet, they would rock it for us, maybe, maybe they could afford some rock.
Right.
So they do have some money there, it's just depends on how bad, I think how bad they want that ditch filled back in. I don't see it as an obstruction to that property at all, it's gonna take six months or take next spring before that grass gets going. You know, maybe if we'd have known right on, we could've got somebody in there with some straw and a grinder and chopped it and embedded that, you know, some stuff down, cause we did get some rain. Probably would've stuck, but I think by spring, you know, let the grass grow, if we have to dry it down, or next summer sometime, or next fall, and. Pick up a little slough, I think it'll be good going forward, so.
Touch that, I, that I'd say, unless they wanna, unless they're gonna really commit to something, leave it alone, let the water flow.
That's kinda what I think.
Yeah, I just, they're not gonna pay for it, leave the ditch there and leave it just like it is, cause it's flowing now.
I guess they can decide how hard they wanna push us, so.
Right, and if they, if they really wanna make changes and wanna buck up some money, they can come in here and we can all talk about it.
That's kinda what I thought.
Otherwise, it's, it's flowing and that's what the, the districts are paying it for.
Rod did wanna get in here someday, and I just told him what to do, he could call the auditors and get on the gym, he could come in and introduce himself and. You know, try to keep a good rapport with us, cause there's a lot of outlets, you know, between Allentown Slough, Winnebago River. Shell Rock River, Worth County, you know.
Yeah, I think that'll work, if they got problems, they can come address it, we can take the next step forward here.
Yep, it's kinda like.
See what happens, so. Anything else to drainage?
No claims are, but.
Uh, payroll claims, sir. Is there a motion approved payroll claims?
I'll make a motion approved.
Wait a second.
All right, all in favor of I? Aye, both. Payroll approved.
Let's see him sign first, it's gonna take me a while.
Gonna use my pen, it is my pen. I got one here with corners on it, that I could probably hang out to. Grip, right?
Another reason to get a stamp, right, Emes?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, uh, reports. No, payroll eligibility or salary change? Public health?
Yes.
No.
Oh.
Part-time, as needed. Is she a nurse, Mary Jo Senn?
I don't know.
I'm not gonna say what the, this is part-time.
What's, is there a number on there? Transit.
Transit?
Oh.
Part-time transit?
Which is one that's retired and.
Was it?
Yeah. Alright, I'll make a motion to prove that.
Okay, motion approved payroll eligibility for Mary Jo? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, worker license renewal for come-go.
Motion to renew worker license for come-go.
Okay, and the motions are second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Aye, both? Do I have to sign this one?
Back to one.
Yeah, I think we should probably put.
Yeah, put the signature one.
Stand right on the bottom.
We should send out a note to the state saying, could you put a signature page on it?
Reports for not the best.
Right, online school, anything on the building and grounds? I think we're following the right direction. Okay, Allison being at nine, uh, Water Main Project. Uh, I did, Jake called me Friday, and they were. Looking for keys to the power box out there at the new tower site, and I told him, well, if you got keys, it's probably you guys. And if you don't cut the lock and put a pilot on the.
They either found it or not, cause I heard Rose there.
Yeah, he was out there and they were trying to get that, that mixer hooked up, so they were having some grief, but I think, I said, worst case, cut it. And put a, pull one on there that matches the tower and everything else that's locked up, so. So they must've got it going, so I'm assuming that's good, but otherwise, I don't think there's any new on that. Um, Monworth, back, go, Melissa.
I had to have a pretty uh, slow week this week, but I am meeting with Brooke Bemler from SBDC today, and then um. The Larson Building in Lake Mills is on contract for, with a company through CBN, so. CBN's coming up again next month, so if anybody wants to come with, they're free to do that. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Where's that at?
Uh, Lake, Lakeview at the Target exit.
Okay. Right on the side of the interstate they do it, is there a building there?
The west side on a nice golf course.
Ah, okay, okay, okay. Alright, I'll keep that in mind. Anything for Melissa?
Nope.
Okay.
And then I'll probably take uh, next week off, so I don't, I don't think I'll be on the meeting on Monday.
Okay, we won't have one Monday anyways, we're not meeting, we're not meeting until Thursday, or no, wait, next week we are, the following week, yeah.
The following.
Between Christmas and New Year, so, okay, thanks, Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, water, waste water, people's service, and nothing that I know of. Uh, department head discussion. Our sheriff went ahead and retired. And see you later today. Any department heads? Sounds like Teresa's meeting with Representative Bloomingdale on. Getting their, or uh, whatever, fees, service fees raised or something, they're, I think they're gonna push for that this year.
Yep.
With ways and means, so that's good. Um, okay, if there's nothing else with department heads and supervisor weekly.
Uh, I had. The EMA this week, and we went through the budget and approved some things that we had to do, and uh. Other than that, got us up to date on the vehicle, we don't know when that's coming in, might come in this fiscal year or next. So, that was about it there. Uh, I did have a meeting then with nine-one-one, and there's. Quite a bit of stuff there that needs to get upgraded. Because our recorder is at the end of its cycle, and the furnace and air conditioning at that FFA tower, FAA tower down there is out. So we're gonna have some expenses with nine-one-one, so, and other than that, oh, I went to the fair. Annual meeting.
Thank you.
And got them up to date on the hotel motel tax, and that they would be getting a check that gets cut next Monday. And then I kinda got them up to date on the fact of you finding that resolution from sixty-five and what that kinda said, so.
Put it on me?
Boy, you were the one that dug for it.
That takes a lot.
You mean to go back and dig that far with, holy cats, I can't believe you found it. So.
She knows how to search.
What's that?
She knows how to search.
Yeah, she must, cause I, I'm not gonna sit there for, oh, seventy years and go digging through stuff.
Yeah, that it? Yep, that was it. Yeah.
Uh, just met with the DNR, of course, out there with the landowner and Charles, or on the DNR ground, and then uh, Winnebago Watershed meeting, which we just. Just a real brief meeting, kinda where we're at, I'm applying for some stuff, and hopefully more after first of the year, see what happens, so.
Oh. Um, I didn't have anything last week, it doesn't look like. Oh, one other thing, I did get ahold of the board members that were there, they were up December thirty-first. And most of them came back in with their new applications. Uh, I got ahold of David Quisley, he said he's both on the Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning. And considering that planning and zoning has come up now on Board of Adjustments later, he's gonna stay on the Board of Adjustment, and. He's not gonna go back to planning and zoning, so I got ahold of Sue Loken, cause she had mentioned to me a year ago that she wouldn't mind being on it. And she said, yeah, she'd fill out an application, I turned it in today, so I got a replacement there for us, so. We got zoning.
Jeff's gonna stay on.
Jeff staying on, then Dan Robb was the other one on Board of Adjustment, wasn't it?
Yep.
And then if Sue gets on planning and zoning, what was the other one you got back that I called?
Oh, having a domain. Did Elgason get back yet?
Did he stop in the office? Jordan, Jordan Elgason? Okay, he was thinking it over.
Okay. Um, otherwise, I think we have about everything covered, uh.
Yep, that would be, we need a domain.
Not community, actually, North Island Regional Housing, something to find on there. Okay. Allison.
Hi.
You ready to go?
Yeah.
If you're ready, we're ready for it.
I'm earlier, sorry.
Oh, that's alright, we can't, um, didn't have uh, much on the agenda today, so. We're just gonna wait for you to come in, and we have another meeting at nine-thirty, so.
Okay, so those of you who don't know me, my name is Allison Mason, I serve as the director for the RSVP program. Um, it stands for Retired and Senior Volunteer Project. We are a branch of AmeriCorps Seniors, so. Um, our biggest goal is to help support community needs by. Connecting people who are fifty-five and older with volunteer opportunities in their community. So our grant was written specifically to help with educational needs. We do do a few other like food pantries and things like that, but the, the crux of what we do is reading buddies, pen pals, and reading coaches, so. Um, this year across six counties, we are serving, um, or last year, sorry, we served um, one thousand and thirteen students in a hundred classrooms. Um. Here in Worth County, that breaks down to two school districts, six classrooms, and forty-one students. Um, something we're really proud of is that, I think it was two years ago, we had a situation when we went to Northwood, and. We had all these teachers coming and wanting volunteers in the room, and we had like, I have the number, um. Nineteen, oh, we had less than that, we had um, seven volunteers. So we kinda hit the ground running and said, they have a need and they want us here, so we're gonna, we got up to nineteen in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Up to twenty-six last year, and right now we have forty-two volunteers serving in Worth County. Um, there continues to be a little bit of volunteer hesitancy about being in schools, if they. Have someone at home who might be immunocompromised or um, other things like that, so we've tried really hard just to continue to be really flexible. Both with volunteers and with our teachers. Um, from every school district we serve, we continue to hear that. They're being asked to put more and more into their day, um, and that. Lessens the amount of time that they have available to send students out um, to work with volunteers, so. Working with them to be flexible and also with the volunteers has helped us continue to um, serve students. Um, last year, eighty-eight percent of students who participated um, in our program in Worth County. Improved their reading scores, we get that data from the teachers sending us their spring and fall, or their fall and spring data. And then ninety-five percent of students surveyed said that they felt an improved attitude around reading, and we do that as a survey that the students fill out themselves, so. Other ways that volunteers in Worth have been involved, um, are at the Nyack Food Pantry, the Hawkeye Harvest Food Bank, and also Elder Bridge Agency on Aging, so. Um, to continue our efforts, RSVP of North Central Iowa respectfully requests forty-five hundred dollars from Worth County for fiscal year twenty-six. Local match funding like this remains a requirement to secure our federal and state funding, um, and enables us to continue to serve volunteers and our communities. Do any of you have questions about the information in your packet or anything?
That's impressive that you're getting that amount of people, you know, over the last couple of years, virtually none.
Yeah, it's been a lot of word of mouth. Um, our volunteer coordinator made some great relationships at local libraries too. Um, because even if she can't sit there all day and. Do the work herself, building that relationship, so that when somebody comes in and says, I'd like to be involved, they already are equipped to. Kind of share the information and get them set up with us, it's been a great thing, so.
Thank you. Is that request, uh, what was last year, they?
It's the same.
And that's needed for funding?
Yep.
State and federal?
They ask us to provide a thirty percent match, um, so we get that through all six counties that we serve. Um, and also just um, small donations from, from people who are interested, um. And that, I think, just helps prove to um, our state level and federal level that we have buy-in in our community, because. If we just sat here and made no relationships with anybody, it would not reflect well on us, so.
Right, right, and that's why I say it looks like it's working, if it's needed by teachers and, and, yep, yeah. But I've got more volunteers, and it's filling the void with schools that they need help with.
Yeah, and I'm just super impressed, because a lot of the times when we get new teachers. Into a building or district, they won't do it their first year, they're like, we have enough, it's overwhelming, um. And I think there were four or five new teachers at Northwood Kenza who joined the program this year, and that was totally based on veteran teachers telling them. That they supported and that they'll enjoy being in it, and um, so that was awesome, reflection of our relationship there, so.
Questions, comments? We'll try our best.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We're struggling with budget, but we'll definitely try our best to do what we can.
I appreciate it, thank you guys.
Thanks for your time.
Have a wonderful one, won't they?
Yep, you too. All right. Uh, anything we need to put on future agendas? I think we got stuff covered.
Been trying to add stuff as I hear about it.
Yep. Insurance meeting later this week.
I even put Dan's retirement card down there just in case.
Yeah, I have planning to attend, I've.
One, maybe, yeah.
Got something going till two o'clock that day, then I'll be up here later in the day, so. All right, nothing else, um, I'll just recess our meeting until our public hearing at nine-thirty. You can pause that.
Come on.
All right, it's nine-thirty, um, has anyone not signed in to the public hearing other than?
There's a gentleman just walked in.
Okay, um, I would take a motion to open the public hearing on the pipeline ordinance.
Stone.
Their second?
My second, yeah.
All right, we'll call vote, Lowbird, maybe?
Alright.
Stone, I, all right, public hearing is open. This hearing is. For discussion, comments, questions on the proposed zoning ordinance, pipeline ordinance. Um, which was brought to us, uh, first part of November. Um, just wanna remind everybody that you get three minutes to state any concerns or comments about this ordinance. Um, and the conversation is to be left at that, whoever's talking, it's their floor, um, so if we can try to keep any other conversations to a minimum, so we can get through this thing. Um, I'm kind of a stickler with that stuff now, so I'd appreciate the quality participation. I've got a list of people, everyone in this room assigned, um, our ordinance has been posted according to code. Um, our ordinance has been posted according to code, it's been available at the auditor's office, online, everywhere it needs to be. So I guess with that, what we'll do is just put on the list. Uh, you can go ahead and speak your comments or concerns to the board. And then after the public hearing, the board will maybe have a little discussion on it. Uh, no action will be taken today. But we may have just a little discussion on any changes or anything, uh, after that for action to be taken at a, at another meeting. So with that, we're on the list and, uh, first one up is Jeff Gorbol.
Thanks AJ, um, and just an administrative note, uh, there's a typographical error on section 5E. Eunice actually found it and pointed it out to me. In 5E, there's reference to section 4C, whatever. That should read, those references in section 5E should read 5 dot whatever, whatever, instead of 4 dot. What happened is we had that text set and then at the very last meeting towards the end, there was a new section 3 that was added in that shoved section 4 into section 5. And so just an administrative typographical error there that needs to be corrected. I have a corrected version to give to the supervisors, uh, when you guys are done with this.
Okay. All right, is that all, Jeff?
That was it.
Okay, thank you for that. As I was reading through it again last night, I kind of got a little confused myself, but makes sense enough. Thank you. All right, uh, next on the list would be James Bergy.
Just wanted to thank you for taking this under consideration and, uh, taking care of the citizens of Worth County rather than bowling down to corporate act. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ann Bachman.
I will reiterate that I thank the zoning commission and the hard work I sat in on to their meetings and they worked hard on it and it was greatly appreciated, especially once I found out that they aren't even paid for all their hard work. And then I want to thank all the people that went around and signed to get this brought to your attention and the seriousness that you guys have, um, recognizing that it is a lot of our lives, our property values. And with the new green methanol that's coming up, there are much ways to do this, so. We can't, I know you guys can't say you can't do this, but you can at least make it where if it is done, it isn't just 300 feet outside my door, because a week there, I don't even have time to run to the attic before I'm out of it. And so with the setbacks that you guys have put in place, at least there is some time for people to be notified and to seek higher elevations and safe spots. So thank you all for all that you put, because I know it's a lot of time that's been put into this, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next on the list would be Roxanne Jackson.
Morning, everyone, thank you for attending, nice to see you all here. Um, Summit Carbon Pipelines wants to build 688 miles of pipeline in Iowa. They have two phases, phase one has been granted eminent domain, we are phase two. In phase one, Summit located the pipeline within 300 feet of 21 homes. That's what we're trying to defend ourselves here from that. I've read seven of the eight ordinances and ours, they've done a wonderful job. Planning and zoning did a wonderful job. They've taken account many things. I'd like to ask you as the public and the Board of Supervisors to pass this as written. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all that, wishes to make comments, but I'll give everybody another opportunity if they did not make a comment already. You sure can if you want, but if everybody's kosher with, with everything, then we can move forward. Yes, sir.
Just like they had AJ, uh, written what the other people said, that this whole thing is going to come down to eminent domain, this ordinance is our land. And I think it's very important that we as local can be stand up against this, because this will set a precedent for the state of Iowa and all Iowa landowners who are interested in this thing. That's, that's, I don't have any problem with, and I've been running two ethanol plants I've farmed for 5 years, so, but I just don't think we need this type of procedure to go over this question. There's a lot better offerings than what they're carrying. Establishment, they see, saw a big pile of money with taxpayer, what I see, tax credits, and they're just going out, because I don't think without those, this thing will stand, wouldn't have a chance to stand. So I think it's great that you guys, and running is open, done with. Very appreciate the support you're showing for allowing emergency assistance for the county.
Yeah, thank you. Dave? Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Um, Mark Thompson with Worth County Emergency Management. I did quite a bit of reading over the ordinance and stuff like that and I liked a lot of what I see in there. Especially into the, the part where it talks about the requirements of the applicant and what they're required to do as far as providing information about their products and, and training the responders and stuff like that. Separation requirements and stuff like that. I, I think where the, the ordinance puts those are at the, the top end or the, the, the highest end of where they can be. I can see that may be a challenge for this ordinance going forward, but like in all negotiations, you start at, at your, your best position and you work to where you end up at. You don't start at your worst position and try to go uphill. You start at the top of your hill and hopefully stay as high in the position as you can. So I understand why the ordinance starts at that position and hopefully can stay there. So that's, you know, I, I don't see any things, you know, from the emergency management world that would give me heartburn on it from that. From other means, there could be problems that will have to be faced and negotiated or worked out, but from the emergency management realm and emergency response, it's, it's nice. You know, so, but like in all things, no one, no one entity, no one realm gets everything they want, so. And we know that.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. No one else has any other comments? I would take a motion to close the, uh, public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public. Second.
Yeah. There's a motion, a second. We'll do a roll call vote, Lowberg?
Aye.
Maybe?
All right.
Stone, aye? Public hearing is closed, will be no more comments on the ordinance. We just may have a little light discussion on it here and, and, uh, look to, um, our readings at our next meeting, so. We've had it for months, we've read it, we've heard public comments numerous times. Any discussion on it at this point?
Go ahead.
Not, not right, really, not right now, no.
Yeah. I don't have a discussion on it right now.
Good. I don't either, I think it's fine. Thank the zoning board, uh, those volunteers that did the, the light work and, um, put this together. It's much appreciated and, uh, I'm not in favor of eminent domain whatsoever, so. That's my opinion on it. Other than that, I think we will just add this to our next meeting to, um, have the first reading of the ordinance. For you guys?
Can you explain what the process is?
So we have to have three readings, uh, we have to have two-thirds majority, two out of three of us got to be here. And the first reading will happen next week. And then we're supposed to do two other readings after that, um, those which can be waived if this board should decide that. Um, if not, it would be three full meetings before it actually would, uh, be enacted and then it's, doesn't take effect until it's posted. So once the board decides to go through the reading process, it would still have to get posted in the newspaper, uh, on our website and everything like that. And then the day that is posted, the paper comes out, that's the day the ordinance is in effect in the county. So if we, if we voted it out on Monday and it makes the paper by Thursday, um, I think Chris will probably leave a spot for us in the paper, um, if we ask him, so that we could get it out in the first, first week's paper, um, then it will take effect and it's a law in the county.
So it's possible next Monday that you guys could all say, we don't need any more hearings? And I could just?
Yes, it is possible. Anything else? That's our process. Okay, we fulfilled our agenda. I'd take a motion to adjourn. Okay? All in favor, aye? All right, meeting's adjourned.